Ladies and gentlemen, this hearing will come to order. Let the record reflect that this is a public hearing being held pursuant to the requirements of Sections 10 and 20 of the Bond Issue Notification Act of the State of Illinois as amended. Notice of this hearing was published on October 22, 2024 in the Daily Herald, a newspaper of general circulation in the city. There's a hearing regarding a plan to issue not to exceed $10 million in aggregate principal amount of the city's general obligation bonds, alternative revenue bonds. The proceeds of the bonds will be used to finance or refinance land acquisition and capital improvements thereto within the TIF district to be established on the date hereof, including in connection with said work acquisition of all land or rights in land, mechanical, electrical, and other services necessary, useful, or advisable thereto. The bonds will be issued by the city in accordance with the provisions of Section 15 of the Local Government Debt Reform Act of the State of Illinois as amended and shall constitute a general obligation of the city's payable from the distributive share of incremental taxes derived from the TIF III Bussie Highway TIF District and the TIF IV Foster Bussie TIF District and such other funds legally available and appropriated therefore. This public hearing is required by Sections 10 and 20 of the Bond Issue Notification Act of the State of Illinois as amended. Now is the time for residents, taxpayers, and other interested persons to express their views for or against the proposed plan of the financing, the issuance of the bonds, and the purpose of the issuance of the bonds. Mr. Wilson, would you please provide a summary of the purpose of the proposed bond issue? Call the roll. Sorry, Brett.
Alderwoman Ames, here. Alderman Catalano?
Here.
Alderman Currielli?
Here.
Alderman Messina?
Here.
Alderman Sismarzki?
Here.
Alderman Artwoods?
Here.
Alderman Artie Woods?
Here.
Mayor, please.
Here. If you could, please swear in, Mr. Wilson.
Do you solemnly swear our firm that the testimony about this case will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yes, a lot of the information tonight, you've probably already seen and heard before. I know there's a couple of questions on this back in October when this item was on the council agenda item, so it should all seem fairly familiar to everybody. We'll go through the important dates, though. The authorizing ordinance for this particular bond issuance was on October 17, the BINA hearing, that's the language that the mayor just read, the Bond Issuance Notification Act hearing, that is tonight, November 7. You'll see a parameters ordinance on the December 5 council meeting. That's going to set forth whether it's taxable, non-taxable, and then some of the other amounts, how the sale type's going to be, things of that nature. So you'll see that on the December 5 council meeting agenda. The sale for the bonds is going to be late December. Again, we're just going to have to see, you know, if there's any Fed meetings coming up, if they think they might lower interest rates again, and where the markets are at around the holiday season. And then the closing and funding of that will be in January of 2025, at which time we will pay off the line of credit, reimburse the city for the interest that we paid over the past 13 to 14 months for the line of credit, and then proceed forward with the issuance being a liability of the TIF. Again, the bond details, you know, the face is going to be the $8 million for the line of credit, the line of credit interest, the accrued interest that we're going to reimburse to the city. The cost of issuance will be included, and then, as I mentioned back in October, there will be some capitalized interest that will be included in that deal as well. The repayment pledge, as the mayor stated in his opening remarks, will be from TIF III and TIF IV, and then if for some reason the increment from those are not sufficient, then it will come from TIF I. So at no point, the intention is at no point, will there be any impact to the city's general fund or its operating funds, that'd be all related to TIF III, TIF IV, and worst case, TIF I, but certainly at no point the general fund or the general operations of the city at that point. And that is all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. At this time, I will ask if there is anyone who wishes to make a comment on the proposed bond issue. If there are no other comments, I will undertake a motion to conclude the public hearing.
I'll make the motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Alderwoman Ames?
Yes.
Alderman Catalano?
Yes.
Alderman Currielli?
Yes.
Alderman Messina?
Yes.
Alderman Sismarzki?
Yes.
Alderman Artwoods?
Yes.
Alderman Artie Woods?
Yes.
Okay, and that passes. Let the record further reflect, this public hearing was concluded at 7:35 PM. Next. This is a public hearing to consider proposal for establishment of special service area 17, SSA 17. Mr. Wilson, would you please provide a summary of the proposed SSA? Oh, we need another roll call? Roll call.
Alderwoman Ames?
Here.
Alderman Catalano?
Here.
Alderman Currielli?
Here.
Alderman Messina?
Here.
Alderman Sismarzki?
Here.
Alderman Woods?
Still here.
Alderman Artie Woods?
Here.
Mayor, please.
All right, we'll begin tonight with a public hearing for the establishment of special service area. Madam Court reporter, would you please swear the witness? It's not a hearing.
It is. Do you solemnly swear our firm that the testimony about this case will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm just going to go. So this is for the proposed establishment of SSA 17. I'm going to do the dates first to kind of set the stage, and then I'll go through the verbiage here. So with the development agreement that was entered into back in November 16, 2023 with Cyrus I, the establishment of the SSA was provided for in that document. So once all of the annexations and land was taken down by Cyrus I, we were loosely compelled to establish this SSA. So on October 3, we passed the proposing ordinance for this. Notices are put in the newspaper, we'll get to that in a second. We're here this evening for the public hearing, and then based upon the timing of dates and the timelines for the special service areas, the actual authorizing ordinance for special service area 17 will be on the January 16 council meeting. There's only one property owner in the special service area, which is Cyrus I. For the service area to not approve, more than 51% of them have to object, so really Cyrus I would have to object, but again, per the development agreement, we were compelled to do this, and they cannot object. So we're not foreseeing any issues with this going forward. This is purely procedural motions that we have to go through, and reading all of this legalese that I'll get to here in a second. Again, though, should we have to execute the SSA and issue debt against it, it'll be the $8 million plus the accrued interest on the LOC, just like the TIF bonds. And again, this is if required, and the only reason that this would be required is if Cyrus I defaults and does not complete the project that they've proposed, and there's not enough increment to pay off the bonds. So there's multiple things that have to happen before we even get to this point, but again, this is the backstops that have been put in place for this project. And then if it does get to that point, there will be additional ordinance ordinances authorizing the issuance of the bonds for this purpose. So going back, the approximate location and general description of the proposed area is shown on the screen, which is the exact area of TIF IV that was approved a couple of weeks ago by the council. The proposed ordinances specify the legal descriptions, property index numbers, and map and land included in the proposed special service area. That was an exhibit to the ordinance approved back in October. The developer is committed to develop this area with one or more data centers, I believe currently they're looking at five, so which is more than one, so that complies. The purpose of special area number 17 and the annual special service area tax is to secure the recovery of the city of Wooddale's advance of $8 million to the developer, Cyrus I, for the acquisition of land and for development costs, all in accordance with the development agreement, a term note, and the zoning and development plans approved for this project area by the city. Again, that was largely included in that R 2371 back in November of 2023. The annual special service area tax will be levied in the special service area only and will be at a rate or amount sufficient to produce the revenue required to allow the city...
Go back one slide, please. Shouldn't that adopting ordinance be 2025?
Mm-hmm. Yes.
Okay. Please make a note.
Now, withstanding the foregoing, the special service area shall be dormant, and the special service area taxes shall not be levied unless and until the developer defaults under the development agreement. Absent the developer's default, the city will establish the Tax Increment Financing District, which we already have done with TIF District IV back on October 17, for the special service area, and is expected that the primary source of repayment of the debt to the city will be TIF increment rather than the SSA taxes. The city's assistance to the developer is unique and in addition to the services provided and/or maintained by the city generally and thus qualifies as a special service area. On October 18, 2024, notice of this public hearing was published in the Daily Herald and was sent by first-class certified mail to all taxpayers of this property within the special service area, again, being singularly Cyrus I. As stated in the notices, all interested parties, persons, including all persons owning taxable real property within the proposed special service area, may be heard at the public hearing this evening. And that is all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, anyone interested in addressing the city council regarding the proposed special service area 17 may do so at this time? Alderman Woods?
I didn't know if I was included in that.
Right. It's more public comment, but go ahead.
No, I could...
Go ahead.
I was just looking for a little clarity. I have to have the major numbers, but this is the backstop, the $8 million, but the $8 million isn't $8 million. What do we do with the difference between the two numbers?
Mr. Wilson? Mr. Wilson?
There is. In the special service area language, it does provide for additional costs that are provided for in the term note, which is an exhibit to the Resolution 23 to 71, and the additional costs to that are cost of issuance and interest costs commensurate to what we were paying on the line of credit, which was so far plus 1%. So those costs are included as eligible costs in the term note as an exhibit to that, so...
Okay, I was just looking for the... Yes, it'll cover.
So I get to... Yes, yeah, but it's kind of...
Okay. Thank you. Is there anybody else interested in addressing the city council regarding the proposed special service area 17? Okay. There being no further public comment, the city council is scheduled to vote on proposed special service area 17. I'll now entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
I'll make the motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Alderwoman Ames?
Yes.
Alderman Catalano?
Yes.
Alderman Currielli?
Yes.
Alderman Messina?
Yes.
Alderman Sismarzki?
Yes.
Alderman Artwoods?
Yes.
Alderman Artie Woods?
Yes.
Okay, and the hearing is hereby closed at 7:43 PM. Okay. So next, we go to city council meeting. I need a roll call.
Alderwoman Ames?
Here.
Alderman Catalano?
Here.
Alderman Currielli?
Here.
Alderman Messina?
Here.
Alderman Sismarzki?
Here.
Alderman Artwoods?
Here.
Alderman Artie Woods?
Here.
Mayor, please.
Here, I declare a quorum. Please stand and join in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation, unregarded, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, first up, I need a motion to approve the minutes of October 17, 2024.
Second.
Okay. Motion, second. Any questions, comments, corrections? All in favor?
Aye.
Posed? That passes. Next, do any citizens wish to be heard on matters not listed on the agenda? Yes, sir. If you can go to the podium. Could you move that, Janelle? Thank you. If you can give us your name.
Good evening, my name is John Cox, J O N C U X, I'm a neighbor from Bensfield. Just briefly, I just wanted, I just want to bring this, my personal matter, to you guys' attention, just because of how it turned out. So I got a notice of default concerning the automated rail crossing enforcement program. Now, I wished I had wished to pursue, and I did respond to the mailing, but this is what I got instead. I got $250 civil penalty and a late fee, added on, extra $100. Now, you know, I wish I could have fought it inside the hearing before this came, but this is how this has ended up. I talked to one of the, I think, the traffic compliance officer on October 14, on the Monday, I showed up here. I had come for a copy of you guys' city ordinances, but I was fortunate enough to see that there was hearings being held and the officer was here, so I got to talk to him, I got to talk to the people a little bit. I have a concern about it, it's greater than, you know, than right now, and I just, I just want to bring forward to your attention that I have an issue with, you know, being, I don't know, I guess lied against. I did not, I did not forfeit, I did not fail to respond by the due dates, and, you know, I'm not, I'm not, I'm not amending liability to the railroad crossing and everything else, but I think if it's lost on you guys, that there's an internal matter with the company that's, that's providing your assistance, the officer would know more about it, but I just, I just, you know, personally, I don't have the $250 to pay you guys, but I want, like, again, I wanted to say this in front of the gentleman that has a hearing, that so that I can pursue it, but this is, this is the soonest possibility that I had to address this, and just wanted to advise you guys of the matter. Hopefully you guys can take, take, take a look into what's going on, and then maybe possibly just hear me out at a different time, you know, but I'm a little nervous, so this is why I'm talking like this, but, you know, that's it.
So if I understood correctly, you got a violation at the railroad crossing?
I was, yes, I was pursuing.
At the cross, and something about, then respond to something, gave you a late fee or something else?
Yeah, so that's, so that's a concern, so, you know, they say, the mail comes in and says, hey, respond to this, mail this back to us in Denver, Colorado, and then we'll get back to you. Well, I did that part, and that's why I said I showed up on October 14 to, you know, get your city ordinances and pursue the matter as, but the gate is, as I could before in the hearing. So like I said, $250 I don't have for you guys, and, you know, if you guys, if the city wishes to pursue me for that, $250 and $350, you know, it's not something I have. But one of the possible penalties, one of this, one of the penalties that you guys could have assigned is 25 hours of community service, and so my thing is...
Yeah, that's what I'm going to do.
For your company and possibly, you know, representing you guys, you guys give me $250 fine.
So if you could talk to the chief, get some information so he understands exactly what's going on.
Well, it's just, it's, I can, I can let them know, but it's also bigger than that because, you know, if it, now that if it happens again, now it's like, now I have to go through all the process again, and...
Well, that's why, that's why...
It's a big issue, I can, I can do that.
Yeah.
But thank you for your time.
Thank you.
You guys do, you guys do good work, and this is just like, my issue, it's personal, but it's the only chance I have right now. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Is there anyone else that wishes to address the council? Next, mayor's report. Before I go to the appointments, I'd like to ask the Wooddale Food Pantry if you'd join me at the podium.
Where's the, can I have that checked?
You're up there, or you're okay?
No, not that one, the real one.
Oh, that is the real one, isn't it?
I should be so lucky.
Took that bigger piece to write the number down.
Okay, so, on behalf of the city of Wooddale, the city council staff want to give this check of $2,500 to the Wooddale Food Pantry. If you guys want to take the picture, it's better you're in the picture than me. Go ahead.
Come on, I can get in this too. That's all right, don't worry.
Oh, this is perfect. Candy's hiding a little bit. There we go.
And if you guys would like to tell us a little bit about your pantry, that'd be nice. You don't get to keep that one, I'm going to go.
I thought you said, because you said the check, so I can't deposit it.
Can't deposit it. I can't wait. Wait, we got that. I'm sorry. Thank you. Appreciate it.
So in 2021, we opened up a brick and mortar food pantry just down the street from here, and over the last three years, it's been an amazing adventure, but I, more importantly, you people are so kind, and you've been so generous. So I don't want to bore you with details of feeding 250 families a week, see how I slid that in. But, but that is true. We are dedicated to try to eradicate food insecurity in this community, and it takes a lot, but, you know, it takes dollars and cents to make the wheels turn, and it'd be great if it was all free, but it isn't, and I want to thank mayor, and I want to thank the city council for your generosity. I'm not just saying that because it's the right thing to do, I'm saying it because I really mean it. This money is critical for the operation of the pantry, and I just, I just can't thank you enough for recognizing that and helping us in our endeavor. Thank you.
Thank you, and thank you for all the hard work you guys do. Janelle, rest assured. Oh, you gave it to Brett?
Thank you. Thanks, everybody.
Next, for board committee appointments, we'll start with environmental and sustainability We'll need a motion to approve the appointment of Susan Feige for a three-year term commencing on November 7, 2024, expiring April 30, 2027, and appointment of Stephen Gauss for a three-year term commencing on November 7, 2024, and expiring on April 30, 2027. Do I have a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Second, do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Posed? That passes. Thank you, and also, Streetscape, we're going to appoint Alderman Currielli as the chairman now, and Alderman Catala, Alderman Catalano will be the vice chair, and for Public Works, Alderman Artie Woods will be the chair, and Alderman Sismarzki will be the vice chair. So had to fill in where Peter left, so... Let's move that. Okay. Next, city manager's report.
Couple items tonight, Mr. Mayor. First item, veterans events in Wooddale. Please join us this weekend as we recognize veterans at two veteran ceremonies hosted by Wooddale at Veterans Memorial Park at 11:00 AM. The first one is scheduled for Saturday, November 9, and is co-hosted by the city, park district, and both police and fire departments to support the VFW and recognize veterans. And then on Monday, November 11, VFW Taoga 2149 leads their traditional ceremony, supported by city staff and community representatives. We hope your schedule allows you to be present at these events, as our veterans have been there for us. We also have our veteran banner program. The 2024 veteran banners are currently on display along Irving Park Road, and we are currently accepting photos of veterans for the 2025 displays. This is a free community program, and the banners stay in rotation for one full year. And then also, wanted to talk a little bit about the holiday ornament contest, which we're once again hosting this year. So all Wooddale students are invited to participate. The deadline to participate is Friday, November 15, so right around the corner, so please have your children drop off their ornament at city hall. All ornaments must be, or all ornaments will be used to decorate city hall, and winners will be recognized at the city's annual tree lighting event on December 7, and you can visit the website for more guidelines and information on this program. That concludes my report.
Thank you. Next, consent agenda. We have six items. If there's no objections, I need a motion to approve six items.
Second.
Okay, motion, second. Roll call. There was no objections, correct? Make sure? Okay, go ahead, just in case I look, I look, but sometimes I miss a hand, so I want to make sure. Go ahead.
Alderman Sismarzki?
Yes.
Alderwoman Ames?
Yes.
Alderman Catalano?
Yes.
Alderman Currielli?
Yes.
Alderman Messina?
Yes.
Alderman Artwoods?
Yes.
Alderman Artie Woods?
Yes.
And that passes. Next, need a motion to approve the items on the agenda. Item number one, a resolution to approve a contract with Upland Design Limited for consultant services to design community park in a amount not to exceed $55,000. Item number two, a resolution to approve a facade improvement grant agreement for site improvement at 425 East Irving Park Road in a amount not to exceed $2,357.25. Item number three, an ordinance amending Chapter 5, Article 3, Section 5.301 of the Municipal Code of the City of Wooddale to prohibit the sale of alcoholic liquor in violation of the terms of the retail liquor license and amending Chapter 5, Article 3, Section 5.304, point A, point 2 of the Municipal Code of the City of Wooddale to provide for their creation of the Class CE Community Event Liquor License. Item number four, resolution authorizing additional contingency funds be added to the agreement between the City of Wooddale and Pacific Construction Services, LLC, for the Police Department, City Hall Interior Renovation Project in a amount not to exceed $75,000. Item number five, a resolution approving agreement between the City of Wooddale and Complete Cleaning Company for citywide janitorial services. Item number six, approval of purchase of special events equipment in not to exceed amount of $50,000. Do I have a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Do I have a second?
Sargant.
Roll call.
Alderwoman Ames?
Yes.
Alderman Currielli?
Yes.
Alderman Catalano?
Yes.
Alderman Messina?
Yes.
Alderman Sismarzki?
Yes.
Alderman Artwoods?
Yes.
Alderman Artie Woods?
Yes.
And that passes. Next, committee chairman reports planning and zoning, Alderman Catalano?
No report, mayor.
Thank you. Public health and safety, Alderman Currielli?
One report, mayor, and ordinance declaring city K-9 vehicle owned by the city of Wooddale surplus for the purpose of selling.
Is that your motion?
That's my motion.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any questions on this? Roll call.
Alderman Currielli?
Yes.
Alderwoman Ames?
Yes.
Alderman Catalano?
Yes.
Alderman Messina?
Yes.
Alderman Sismarzki?
Yes.
Alderman Artwoods?
Yes.
Alderman Artie Woods?
Yes.
And that passes.
That concludes my report, mayor.
Thank you. Public Works, Alderman Artie Woods?
No report, mayor.
Thank you. Finance and administration, Alderwoman Ames?
I have one report, mayor.
Okay.
A resolution authorizing the mayor to execute the PACE Municipal Vehicle Program Agreement. That is my motion.
Do I have a second?
Sargant.
Any questions on this one? Alderman Artwoods?
Thank you. So when I was looking at that, there, there were a few changes to the vehicle, that being video and audio recording on the bus inside...
video and audio recording on the bus inside and outside. Does that run afoul or in conflict with any of our union contracts? Because I know that that was an issue when we talked about the contracts before, being able to track the vehicles. Anybody?
Is there a rebaron?
No issues as far as the union is concerned. When the vehicle was upgraded, the specs of the video recording software were presented to the collective party unit.
Excellent. Thank you.
Any other questions? Roll call.
Alderman Ames? Yes. Alderman Currielli?
Yes.
Alderman Catalano?
Yes.
Alderman Messina?
Yes.
Alderman Sismarsky?
Yes.
Alderman Artwoods?
Yes.
Alderman Artie Woods?
Yes.
And that passes.
And that concludes my report.
Thank you. Other business this evening? Nothing on the airport noise or stormwater? Well, actually, the airport noise, I believe they finally moved, CDA and FAA have gotten the paperwork for the Fly Quiet. That's going to take about, what was it? Going off the top of my head, about two, two to three months, and for them to review, I believe it was, and then another 30 to 90 days after they're done with that, but I know how it works over there. I'm sure it's going to take longer than six months, but that's just a quick update. Approval of list of bills. Alderman Ames?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the list of bills for November 7th, 2024, for That is my motion.
Do we have a second?
Sargen.
Okay. Any questions? Roll call.
Alderman Ames? Yes. Alderman Currielli?
Yes.
Alderman Catalano?
Yes.
Alderman Messina?
Yes.
Alderman Sismarsky?
Yes.
Alderman Artwoods?
Yes.
Alderman Artie Woods?
Yes.
And that, and that passes.
And that concludes my report.
Thank you. We do need executive session. We are going to adjourn to executive session for review of the minutes, land acquisition and land disposition. Do we have a motion?
Assumed.
Second.
Motion and second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? We are adjourned.